I'll just ask the council, okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's a regular meeting of council Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. Called to order at seven P. M. precisely. Doctor councillor Dipitisa for the territorial acknowledgement.
Thank you, Chair. We acknowledge with respect the Wasanik people on whose traditional territory the district stands and the Wasanik people whose historic historical relationship with the land continues to this day.
Thank you. Move on to late items. There are late items eight A. Double I. There are six emails re Wayne Park, which I actually think they say Wayne Road and item eleven C, which is a late email. Any other late items? I see no other late items. So I look for a motion to approve the agenda with late items added. Okay, I'll go with Sanjeev first and councillor McLean talk second.
I'd like to speak to it.
You wish to speak to it?
Yes. I'd like to move some of the items that are on the agenda. I'd like to move my own.
If I may ask, you had an opportunity to do that a few minutes ago and now you're choosing to do it after motions?
Senator, you went to late items and then I'm.
Okay.
Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to move some items.
Yeah. If you wish to move some items, then councillor can vote on that. So what items do you wish to move?
I'd like to move item ten or correction eleven B and D. Pages sixty three, sixty five and seventy five.
Sorry? Pages?
Sixty three, sixty five and seventy five, which are items eleven A, B and D. And I see that we're moving a lot of this, these late items to the to eight A two. Seeing as these are in relation to the Wayne Park, perhaps we could just move them into eight eight two as well rather than into ten B, C and D.
Sorry, I just see that I put one in there and it should have been G, not C. So you want items sixty three, which is Wayne Park, another one from Wayne Park. I'm sorry.
And pages seventy five, which is item eleven D. So items eleven A, B and D could be moved to eight A I I along with the late items, if you'd like, or into ten. B, C and D.
Let's move them into ten B, C, D. Which, well, it doesn't be motioned yet, that's seconded yet, but. Yes?
I just want to confirm councillor McLean check through the chair, sorry. Those three items, you'd just like to move them into eight A along with the other items that came in as late items, is that correct?
I'm sure I did have this turned on. Could you repeat that?
Sure. I just want to confirm those three letters that are already in the agenda package, you just simply like to move them along with the late items that came in into eight A double I, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And if the if the council is not in favor of that, then I would like it moved into ten B, C and D.
I'd be happy to second the motion to move them into eight A two. But I would just like to, before we go any further, if I could share, if we're going through the approval of the agenda, I just have a question for staff and I'm just, perhaps you can enlighten me, I'm just wondering why we have on page three of our agenda item eight A, pardon me, eight C one, the committee of the whole meeting draft minutes there? Wouldn't we normally just see those at the next committee of the whole meeting? Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you. That's a good question. Typically, we do, if there's not a committee of the whole meeting scheduled very soon, we do put them on the agenda just for information and they will get approved at the next committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you.
So that becomes D. Okay, so we have it motioned, we have it seconded. Any further comments? Those in favor? Unanimous. So now, if we go back to the introduction of the late items, so now what we have is item eight A two and now we have eleven emails, that includes what was eleven A, B and D. And what was going to be item eleven C is actually eleven D. No? A is moved, B is moved. Yes, and that becomes A. B, C, D. Okay, got it? Thank you. Okay. Need a new motion on that? Nope, okay. There's the changes, I look for approval of the agenda with the late items. Councillor McConkey, I'll go with councillor Sanjeev. Any comments? No comments, those in favor? Unanimous. Now we look for item five, which is public participation period. If there are any members of the audience who wish to speak, could you please put your hand up first? Okay, thank you. Now, I have to go through the, if I can find it. Public participation period. Rules and procedures. Persons wishing to address council must state their full name, municipality of residence for identification, also topic involved. Questions and comments must be on topics which are not normally dealt with by the municipal staff as a matter of routine. Questions and comments must be addressed through the chair and answers given likewise. Debates with or questions of individual council members will not be allowed. Item four, no commitment shall be made by the chair in replying to a question. Matters which may require action of the council shall be referred to shall be referred to in future meeting of the council. Each speaker during public participation period must use respect for language and refrain from making offensive gestures or signs and is limited to speaking for three minutes unless authorized by the chair to speak for a prolonged period of time. And twenty minutes will be allocated for the public participation period unless extended by vote of the council. So those who wish to speak, please come forward, first person.
Go here?
Yep.
I understand this evening you're going to be speaking regarding the Wayne Road Park and the Noble Gardens. We live next door to the Noble Gardens and.
Oh, sorry, can we have your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Emily Krieger and I reside in North Sandage, I'm at Drana. So just in regards to the Noble Gardens, we live next door and we share a fence with the Noble Gardens. We love what's happening over there, it looks great. But the fence is on the Noble Gardens side of the property and it's currently made of chicken wire and I guess farm steel posts, so and it's crumbling. So we were wondering as part of the resurrection of the park or however it's going to proceed, if council would A, consider redoing the fence for our privacy, we have dogs, children, et cetera. And then also there are two very large trees on the, right on the property line. They're mostly on the Noble Gardens side, but they don't meet the fire code regulations and they're quite close to our house. So we'd like to ask for the consideration of those to be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's, oh, thanks, okay.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and councillor. My name's Larry McGregor and I live out in Madrona Drive in the Deep Cove area. I've got a few comments on the parks. The proposed parts for Deep Cove. First of all, the Noble Park, don't know that much about it, but in my opinion, it looks pretty good. Wayne Road, of course, and I'm not a pickleball player, everyone, I'm not a pickleball player. I was surprised when I was, I was at a meeting a couple, a month ago and you were talking about the, the plan that you've got going on it. And I was surprised that the demographics wasn't talked about a little bit more of the Deep Cove area because these are parks for the Deep Cove area. And so I just did a few little numbers and like the, the average age is anywhere from fifty to seventy nine in the Deep Cove area. There's only five percent of the population that's, would be in the water park age group. So we're not talking very many people. So we're talking an awful lot of money here and of course, that's part of my taxpayers' money too. So that was just some of my comments on it. Now, we've been talking about doing a baseball field and a basketball court and a water park. So there's a lot of money that, going out in that part of it. And I just wanted to make sure that we do enough demographics and have enough information. We talked about getting a baseball association to play baseball there. I mean, it seems a shame to go out and spend all this money and not, we want to make sure that they're going to come if, if we build this stuff. And so I just have a few concerns on that. I'd like, the demographics is a big one for me because we're, you know, we're not going to be out there playing baseball and, you know, we're just not going to be doing that. Now, the pickleball court, we had a lot of people, obviously, and there's been all kinds of talk about the pickleball court. You know, there's been, so it's, it's sitting there. Again, that's an awful lot of initial money that went out, my money went out there. And it's, it's sitting, I find that a terrible waste. And we've talked about, and you guys know a lot more about it than I do, I'm just kind of on the outside looking at this, but I just had to get up and say a few words today. The, one of the things that I've been looking at is because you've spent, you know, you're talking about relocating it with tunes of four to five hundred thousand dollars, we got a water park here, we're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't know what all of the other costs are going to be involved. Has anybody ever thought about just putting a small or enclosing it, put a building around it? I mean, you don't have to go and spend a lot of money on it, you've got all the facilities outside, I don't know all the regulations, now that's another thing. But I mean, a cheap block building is, is going to be, and you still have a, a structure that you could use all year. And you've got a lot of people, you know, to, there's been a lot of people talking about this thing. So it just seems a waste to me to just tear it up. So that's all I had to say, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Chair?
My name is Philip Harris, I'm from Pender Island. Thank you for adding my letter to your agenda tonight, I'd like to speak to that a little bit. It was about artificial turf fields, microplastics, PFAS chemicals. Since writing that letter, I discovered that studies have shown that microplastics, was thought that it wasn't possible, but now studies are showing that they can cross the blood brain barrier through the olfactory nerves, which are in through your nose. So airborne microplastic fibers are the most concerning. I had asked for a moratorium on artificial turf fields. So no more artificial turf fields until these studies can actually be researched more in depth. Apparently, these plastics that get into the brain, they disrupt the mitochondria, blocking electron transport chain, blocking the electron, electron transport chain, which can cause anxiety. And there's correlation between dementia patients and these microplastics in the brain, although causation isn't yet proven. In terms of the PFAS chemicals, I'm no expert, but I do know that they are known to bioaccumulate inside people where they are very difficult to break down, our body actually won't break them down, as far as I understand it. It's caused tumors in cows and it's, it's, it's able to be dealt with, something can be done about it. There, there's white rot fungus, which I mentioned, which has lignin degrading enzymes, which can help break down the fluorine in those carbon fluorine bonds. And then we can use cattail reeds to suck the PFAS chemicals out of the ground and then that could be incinerated. But incinerating it is like, it's a dangerous, I can't remember what the, the word is, hazardous materials or something like that. You would need help from the province and the feds and cooperation with, you know, our institution, our, our universities like B C I T to develop something that could, maybe a truck with an incinerator that could go around municipality to municipality and incinerate those reeds. The, the white rot fungus helps to make it so that when it incinerates it, it, it actually will break down those chemicals. And, you know, I would just want to say like one thing that will bring the province and the feds to the table is having our mayors standing on the legislature steps because that seemed to help with Ecom. I don't know if you noticed, but the independent review had just come back from that. And the buck pretty much stops nowhere with Ecom. You can write a letter and never get any response from them, the same way those mayors were having that problem in, I think Manitoba was in the letter. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sorry? I was wondering if I could ask the last speaker a question? What his reference was? If you have a medical journal that you're referencing?
Well, there's, it's, somebody had done all these studies, it just came out a couple of days ago, that was for the microplastics. If, I don't have any sources written down, but very easily, something you can look up is on YouTube, Anton Petrov.
Okay, but do you have a medical journal that you're referring to?
Not, no, no, I'm not, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? And before I move on to the next, I remind councillors that in the, in the three minute public participation, the only one that's supposed to be, can interact with the speaker is the mayor, not individual councillors. So I thank you.
I know it's at the mayor's discretion.
So no, no further speakers, then I call it close to the public participation period. I now look at adoption of minutes, any errors, omissions?
Adoption.
Okay, can you do, seconded? Thank you councillor Marshall. Councillor Stock, please consent resolution, as read perhaps?
Yes. I would like to make the motion to adopt the minutes A, B, C and D listed there, would you like me to read each one of them?
No.
No, just as read or as stated in.
As stated.
As stated in the agenda.
That's right. We do listen. Thank you. So we've got a motion, we've got a seconded, any comments, questions? Nope, those in favor? Unanimous. So we move on to item seven, which is petitions delegations and I understand that we have the pleasure of Sergeant Wayne Conley. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of council, happy to be back to provide an update on policing services for you this evening. I actually have two sort of separated presentations or first the, the quarterly updated report, but then I would like to follow with just some introductory comments regarding the major crime disclosure clerk proposal. And I know that Ms. Webster has a report for, to review with Mayor and councillor. That sound okay, Mayor?
Yep.
Yep. So during two thousand and twenty five, the detachment has experienced a significant turnover with municipal administration support staff. Five employees, which is one half of our administrative staff, left their positions this year for a variety of reasons, relocation, new job opportunities and retirement. These employee departures have impacted operations resulting from the loss of experience and considerable effort to hire, complete security clearances and train replacement staff is being undertaken and is ongoing, but I think you can probably appreciate what a challenge that has been this year. On the staffing of officers side of the detachment, there have been three police officer departures in two thousand and twenty five. Two officers left the RCMP and joined other police agencies. A third officer proceeded on a transfer to another detachment. Two replacement officers have arrived and another officer is expected to arrive in February two thousand and twenty six. One vacancy remains unfilled at this point with ongoing efforts to staff that position being made. Four other members are on extended medical or parental leave. I am happy to report this evening that effective October first, the internal staffing of our municipal traffic position, which I've spoken to councillor about previously, has been completed. Constable Rob Scott is an experienced traffic enforcement officer and will be carrying out these duties in both North Sandage and Sydney. I'm happy to, to be able to finally see that we've achieved that. As updates on equipment and vehicles, there are some changes that will enhance the response and capabilities of our frontline officers. I would like to share that in addition to one hybrid police vehicle the detachment has, we will become greener with the arrival of an E V Ford F one fifty truck. This vehicle is provided at no cost to the municipalities because it is part of a national pilot to assess the suitability and the functionality of E V vehicles for frontline twenty four hour policing. That vehicle has just arrived in the last week. In Au- in August two thousand and twenty five, detachment uniform members were trained and equipped with body worn cameras. The initial analysis that, that there are delays is that there are delays in the evidence disclosure process. And the resolutions of these issues are complex and they remain a work in progress as we work through these, some of these challenges. A new model of conducted energy weapon or TASER equipment and extended long range impact weapon equipment are new additions to the detachment's equipment inventory this year and both provide further non lethal use of force options. The rollout of training in the use of this equipment is ongoing. With respect to the crime summary report that would have been shared with council previously, this most recent crime summary report for the period ending September thirtieth indicates crime level, crime levels that are similar to the previous year and five year trends. Crimes against persons levels closely resembled statistics from the previous year with assault, domestic violence and sexual assault offenses being the highest reported offenses in this category. We are seeing a very similar pattern with property crime levels, again closely resembling levels of the previous year. Break and enter offense levels remain low in the community with fraud, theft and mischief being the highest reported property crimes in North Sandage. Overall, overall total crime offense rates rose four percent over the previous year. I wanted to take a few minutes and just touch on a, a few things about policing costs as we present the proposal for a new major crime disclosure clerk position. The landscape of evidence collection by police, by police continues to advance and shift along with changes in technology. We recognize that new equipment such as body worn cameras and conducted energy and impact weapons are additional costs to policing. These changes affect not only costs but result in added work burdens when we consider the obligations for disclosure. The integrated model of policing that North Sandage is part of with Sydney and with the province reduces the cost of each officer by thirty percent with the District of North Sandage paying seventy percent of that cost. North Sandage has a contract contractual agreement with the RCMP for twelve officers. In two thousand and twenty five, it is forecasted that based on the vacancy pattern this year, North Sandage will pay for approximately nine officers, which is less than anticipated. In two thousand and twenty six, changes are taking place with respect to the integrated mobile crisis response team. For many years, North Sandage has participated in cost sharing of this mental health team, which has included two police officers. A new model will, will involve police and island health working collaboratively, but reduce the need for police involvement where health led interventions are most appropriate. This change in the model will result in an annual policing cost reduction to North Sandage of fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. So I'd like to proceed now with the, the introductory comments that I have for the major crime disclosure clerk and then perhaps Mayor Jones, we could take questions if there are any after that, if that would be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. So in addition to the report presented by North Sandage administration, I would comment that our major crime section currently consists of three officers whose primary mandate is to investigate the most serious or complex crime incidents being handled by the detachment. There are provincial policing standards which require these investigations to establish a pri- primary investigator, a file coordinator and a team commander as a management structure for these investigations. An affiant or search warrant writer is almost always another critical component of these investigations. I think it is helpful to have an understanding of the current evidence collection process, which has increased in complexity in recent years as a result. which has increased in complexity in recent years as a result of expanding technology. And I acknowledge that there are police officers here in our room and on council who probably understand this quite well. Almost all serious crime investigations involve hundreds of tasks that are identified, assigned, result in evidence collected, and detailed documentation into an electronically structured file. The investigation process is labor-intensive when considering management of a crime scene to preserve all evidence, the preparation of initial search warrants to authorize the search for and seizure of evidence, often including forensic evidence, electronic device evidence, and physical evidence, the interview of all persons who may be able to provide any evidence involved in the investigation, the canvassing of neighbors, businesses, BC Transit, taxi companies, the airport, BC ferries, for video evidence is an essential evidence collection step. The preparation of judicial authorizations and warrants are required to collect medical records, bank records, seized vehicle searches, phone records, or to seek DNA evidence. The crime lab analysis process provides further investigation steps, as does the crime analysis process of phones and computers. All of the evidence collection steps conducted requires detailed documentation, and the materials gathered can amount to thousands of pages of seized materials. My perspective, or how I would present the understanding of this disclosure process, is to say that it is impractical and unrealistic for investigating officers to carry out both the serious, complex crime investigations, and then to also additionally compile, organize, format the volumes of evidence into ledger-based electronic disclosure as mandated by the MOU with Crown Council. As indicated in the report, the disclosure package prepared will contain hundreds of tasks. The electronic ledger will include hyperlinks. Tasks will have materials vetted and include naming conventions as part of a formatted structure. The disclosure process in itself is very labor-intensive, requires considerable training, and it is not feasible for officers to manage and meet the disclosure deadlines on these serious crime offenses and the obligations for presenting the evidence to Crown Council. So in summary and brief, just some additional points that I would like to make is the disclosure workload for major crime investigations is not manageable by the investigating officers. It is unrealistic to train and develop major crime disclosure skills for all three officers in the major crime unit. The impact of disclosure work is resulting in delays of investigation work, with some project investigations not even being undertaken. There is no flexibility involved to disclosure deadlines for things like in custody matters, 490 extension applications, or in accordance with Jordan rules for criminal proceedings. So I, in summary, I propose that the major crime disclosure clerk position is an essential position that we need in order to be successful as we conduct these serious crime investigations. And I am looking for mayor and council to join with Sydney in supporting that position. Thank you. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Counsel, questions? Let's start with Counsel Marshall.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Just a couple of questions. I'm going to just start with the crime statistics, the crime summary that you provided. So the domestic violence number is increasing 167%. That's obviously very concerning. I know others have as well, but particularly I looked at that and thought that was something that we need to discuss further. Do we have a dedicated domestic violence officer at the detachment?
We do not. We have our general investigation section, again, our major crime units that can assist with the more complex of those investigations. But typically, those investigations are carried out by our frontline officers. And we also have, we are also part of the regional domestic violence unit, albeit, you know, it's not very often that we have a case referred to them.
Great, thank you. The next question I have, when I'm looking at the statistics overall, can you maybe touch on what impact, if any, repeat offenders are having on these numbers?
Well, I guess I would put that in more in the category of the property crime. So what we're seeing is, if I can turn to the page with property crime, what I mentioned is that we're having a fairly low number of break and enter type offenses, which is often a repeat criminal problem. But in terms of some of the other property crime, like fraud, I think if we were to look at the fraud, and there is a, as you may have noticed, there is that fraud summary page as part of the report, that's definitely, definitely a repeated crime offender thing. Our emphasis has, as I've mentioned before, been focused on prevention. Our investigations are not always, are not often successful in those fraud scam type investigations. So that's a repeat category. In terms of the crimes against person things, I don't see that there's a lot of repeat offender that's happening there.
Thank you. And just one last question. Body worn cameras, you mentioned, I think that they came, they kind of rolled out August 25th, so I'm presuming that's federally, that's across Canada, or is that specific for BC?
The rollout is a phased rollout with certain areas of the province. The, I believe, the first areas were, well, there were, there were a few detachments that were pilot to begin with. And then there was the interior of BC was called Southeast District. And then the Lower Island was the next phase of that. So there are still further phases to roll out. And I think it's probably going to be another year or more before they complete that rollout for British Columbia. And then you talked about nationally. I can't really speak to what's happening in other provinces. I'm not, I'm only really aware of what's happening in British Columbia. I know the plan is for it to roll out across the country, though. Yes.
Counsel McConkey?
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair to Staff Sergeant Connolly. Thank you very much for your report. Just have a couple of questions off the crime summary, please. I see that the mental health apprehensions year-to-date are decreased by 28%. Is there any reason for that? I think it's very good news, but is there anything that you might be able to expand on with that? Thank you.
No, I noticed that we have seen some fluctuation in those statistics, and it's good to see that there is a bit of a decline this way. I don't really know what to attribute that to specifically. We do work closely with, you know, the community in terms of, you know, just different sectors of the community. We also are working closely with unhoused. And we also, I think it's favorable that we're seeing a bit of a decline there in terms of the wait times that are at Royal Jubilee Hospital. Those continue to be, as you may have noticed, there's not really much of a decline in those wait times, even though our numbers are lower.
Thank, and just one more, if I may, in regard to the impaired drivers. They also seem to be going down, so hats off to, obviously, good enforcement there. Just a question, though. When we see this report, are those impaired drivers that you're taking off the road, are they residents of North Sandage, or they just happen to be someone driving through North Sandage, coming from the ferry, whatever? I'm just curious as to if those are actually our residents that you're charging with impaired driving. Thank you.
I'd have to look at every specific file to be able to give you an accurate number. I think it's, you know, a general response would be that they're people from all over the area, right, and not necessarily, not necessarily local. I will say that our numbers have a lot to do with our levels of enforcement. We've had a bit of a turnover of experienced officers and that traffic enforcement expertise. And so as we have new officers, we're trying to rebuild that capacity. And I'm very much looking forward to having our traffic officer, who is going to help mentor and build our capacity on that as well. But most of the impaired driving is self-generated. I mean, we get, we do get calls about impaired drivers, but a lot of it is self-generated enforcement.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel McClintock?
Yes, thank you for the report and the upgrade, or the update and the information on this, on this position. I presume that this major crime disclosure clerk is a civilian position?
Yes, it is.
And it, in your, in your presentation, you talked about it to support three major crime members? Is that, is that the ratio, one clerk for three members? Or like, Westshore have two or three of these clerks? Or one clerk can handle quite a few files?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I know that most major crime units have at least one major crime disclosure clerk. I know that North Couch and Duncan detachment have more than one disclosure clerk for their unit, but they're bigger units. I also know that Westshore, I'm not sure whether Westshore have three, or, you know, three, Westshore, and I believe two, just recently a second one at Duncan, North Couch. And we're, I actually feel like we're behind the curve in this by a fair bit. This, the MOU that was signed with the change of disclosure requirements was in 2020, and it was also a phased rollout of that electronic disclosure MOU with us being sort of a level three. But we're now finding, like, I'll be really candid, we're finding that, and I need to say this, I think, so that you help you understand. So we have these three officers, and these officers, as they work on these more complex files, sometimes they're, you know, larger sex assault files, robbery files, we had three robbery files in Sydney this past year, as they work on these files, they're spending like the majority of their time with disclosure and not enough time investigating. And we, we want our police officers to be investigating the crime. But the disclosure requirements, which brings in all these other obligations, are actually, have them bound to their desk doing, basically administrative stuff. So we're paying them to do administrative tasks when we need them to be doing investigations.
All right. Thank you. Well explained.
Thank you.
Counsel, questions? See, no more, whoop, no more hands up. So obviously, you've done a very good job, because I remember a year ago, it was quite a few. So I thank you, and
Thank you, Mayor.
We look forward to the next time we meet.
Well, our, just a question. Will, Ms. Webster, will you be doing your report at this point? Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're through with item seven, which is petitions delegations. We now move on to item eight, which is reports. And the first staff report is the RCMP Administrative Resource Pre-Approval Request. Staff?
Thank you. So the staff report goes into a bit of detail, as Sergeant Connolly has also explained in great detail. And so I'll just highlight the request. Cost-wise to the district, should the council choose to approve this, is a 0.29% tax increase for 2026, a $42,460 would be the North Sandage's share of that major crime disclosure clerk. And Sydney went and approved that request at their November 10th meeting as well. So those are the two things that I just wanted to highlight and add to the, to the staff report. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. Counsel, Counsel Marshall?
Just a quick question for you, Chair to Staff. There's a 10% administrative fee from the Town of Sydney? Can you just explain a little bit of what that is? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a standard charge that they charge on a lot of our contracted services that we do for them. They've got to have the staff to administer all of the, all of the work that they do to support the RCMP that we don't have to do. So that's sort of their fee for doing all of that work.
Okay. Sorry to clarify the fee specific to this position, though, correct? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Deputista?
Yeah, that was my question, too. So thank you, Chair.
Uh, Staff?
Thank you through the chair. Sorry, just to clarify, so the administration fee, the 10%, is actually, we have a bunch of cost-sharing agreements with the Town of Sydney that they administer on our behalf. And so that admin fee is charged on, for example, our cost-share agreement for the RCMP detachment, all of the maintenance, everything that's being undertaken there as well. So it's not just specific to this position. So it's just, it's part of our cost-sharing arrangement.
Okay, so through you, Chair to Staff, is it an additional 10% then, or is this something we're already paying?
Thank you through the chair. So it's a 10% on any of the costs associated with the cost share. So it would be an addition. Yeah.
Counsel's questions? Counsel Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Through you to Staff. I think this is a very good idea. I understand the level of administrative and, you know, preparatory work that's required not only for the files and for the investigators, but also, I mean, Crown Council is becoming more and more demanding. We have all these, these other issues that impinge upon cases being put together, such as Jordan's rule. And I, it requires an enormous amount more work. And when you ask our, our fellow counselors who have more knowledge of this than I do, they'll tell you that. So I, I think in order to have a very efficient major crime, pardon me, case management at the RCMP detachment, that it's a really good idea to have the major crime disclosure clerk position. And the fact that we're cost-sharing it with Sydney is, is a very good idea, too. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Staff, and to the RCMP. Thank you.
Counsel, through the questions?
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair to Staff, you mentioned that the potential tax impact is only 0.29%. So 1% equivalent is about $146,000, while in the previous year, 1% has been about $180,000. So are we now looking at tax implications to be less in the forthcoming year?
Thank you for the question through the chair. The 1% tax increase for 2025, I believe, was $135,000. For 2026, it's projected to be $148,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, further questions?
No questions, Chair. I'm happy to make the motion or speak to it, you know. It's critically important.
Can you put the motion on the floor?
Absolutely.
And motivate to it?
Yep, certainly, Chair. I'd like to move that counsel approve the new major crime disclosure clerk position for the Sydney North Sandage RCMP detachment, allowing the detachment to initiate the hiring process near the end of 2025.
Okay. Second, Counsel Stock. Counsel Deputista, you wish to motivate?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I need to or not, Chair. I've served on four of these units. Three had a disclosure clerk and one didn't. And we didn't finish our first file before And we didn't finish our first file before we had to go here. So this is a critically important position that can't be understated. It is not something that you can just hire somebody for. They need specialized experience and training, so. And given that, you know, our detachment's now gone to body, war and camera, that job is about to double, at least, or more. The disclosure requirements are, are beyond daunting. And it's not something a police officer, you want our, our police officer on the street, not sitting in front of a computer vetting things, and that's what this job is. So wildly supportive of the motion.
Thank you. Counsel Stock, wish to motivate?
Well, thank you, Chair. I think that I did motivate when I spoke through you to staff about how important I think the position is. And having a lot of experience with Crown Council, I understand the exigencies of this type of work. And I agree with Counselor DeBattista that we need our, our police, you know, doing police work and not trying to put these files together in, in order, semblance of order that they will be accepted in, through the system. It's, it's, it's a terribly difficult job. And I've been reading about body-warm cam, body-worn, sorry, body-worn cameras and how much of, how much time it takes to, you know, take the information off them. And then you've got to take that and put it to, in the files. And I mean, it's just going to increase the work time by an incredible percentage. So I, I, I really think that this is a critical job. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Comments or questions? Counsel McConkey?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment, I have no doubt that this could be something that, I know Sydney approved it, and I'm sure with the dwindling resources in the RCMP, it's something that's desperately needed. However, I have a concern with these early budget requests. There is one that's being referenced in our Horizon Report. We start our budgeting process on Monday, week from now. So for me, I'm not going, you know, in this position where I'm prepared to support anything until I have a much bigger picture of what the overall impact is to our taxpayers in North Sanits'. So I'd be happy to see this go to budget on Monday, but I can't approve it as it is right now. Thank you.
Counsel McClintock?
Yes, thank you. I can only echo what I've heard my colleagues say about support, being in support of this. I think the purpose of the, or the, anytime that we can get, get our members back out in the, back out in the street to Kilo Alpha and take names, that's, that's better for us in the community. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Counsel Sanjeev?
Thank you, Chair. As always, I'll go to the point that I always like the fact that we'll employ more people. I'm always in favor of increasing staff. But here, there is a bigger question that comes into play. Most of the issues that being talked about is a process between training before getting onto the job versus training on the job. And I think this is not as much as anything to do with what's going on at the present, but something inherently embedded in the way the training takes place. So that's one part of the issue that one has to look into. Major crime issues with RCMP looking at different AI models in analyzing systems, in deciphering, and of course, there are false positive in any algorithm-based system that takes place. I think there is more that needs to be done from the side of RCMP to, to inform the public and to make us aware that the, despite the training that the police officers go through, despite the forward-looking cyber-related, this is like going into AI cyber type of training, that there is still an inability of the system not to be able to address the issues at hand. So it's slightly more complex than probably what this application, the funding is. I do concur with Counselor McConkey. We are just a week away from budget. It would make sense to have a whole holistic picture of what the costs are. In all essence, we need to get the budget done before we go into pre-budget approvals. We have done something earlier. I think that that's the wrong process to do in, in terms of proper disclosure and transparency for the public. We need to have the budget first and then whatever is involved, bring that in and see how it impacts overall cost. So that's what my comment would be. Thank you.
Counsel Marshall?
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I would, well, I completely see the need for this position. I understand where, where the request is coming from. I don't think anybody of, any of us sitting up here is gonna, is going to argue against that. The thing is, I find myself in the same position. The difficulty is that we have other people that have come forward asking for the same thing with the same plea and with the same level of importance. And I agree that when we're just approving things without understanding the bigger picture, that makes it a little bit more difficult for us to be financially responsible to our citizens. Not saying that the position's not necessary, it's just we're not looking at the whole financial picture of the organization. And I, I don't think that's a good way to, to be making decisions. I think it's difficult when we're just sort of making them one-off. If the budget process was six, seven, eight months down the road, that would maybe make me reconsider, but it is Monday. So, and at that time, when we look at the numbers, we can make a motion on Monday that says we do want to speed this up once we have that full picture. So I would rather see what this looks like coming Monday, because it is going to impact our, our taxpayers.
Any further questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. So I'll look for a vote on that. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries 4-3 with Counsel McConkey, Counsel Marshall and Counsel Sanjeev in opposition. So now we move on to item two, which is Wayne and Noble Garden Park plans. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Through the chair. So this report presents, Counsel, another opportunity to review and modify emerging ideas for both the Wayne and Noble Garden Park plan development. With the attached images, you'll see that Wayne has now two options for consideration for the pickleball courts, the previously presented multi-sport court, and a new community, community gathering place. For Noble Garden, a revised fence line configuration and a dedicated agricultural area has been added. So follow, following counsel directions, staff have further considered a splash pad for inclusion as an option for Wayne Park. The report before you speaks to some of the other considerations with regard to such an installation. So I invite you to review those on page three of the report. And I'm here to support your discussion and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel? Okay. Counsel Marshall?
Thank you through you, Chair to staff. We did hear from a member of the public about the fence for Noble Garden, and there's a fence that they were mentioning. I know you've talked about a fence in the Noble Garden layout. Is that the fence that the individual was talking about?
Thank you. And through the chair, the addition of a new fence line was actually through some discussion with Penny. And it's shown on the, I guess, on the west, west side of the property. I'm not sure if it exactly lines up with the resident that spoke today.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I'll just, a question. Sorry, Ben, we've got to that question. Do you need a mo, you know, I'd like to know, are you going to discuss it with the property owners, or the, the lady that came before us earlier? Or do you need a motion to do that?
Thank you. And through the chair, considering these are just early ideas from interest holders and we're eminently going to be embarking on the full community engagement, we'll have lots of time to hear about those, those, those specific items. And she's welcome to email through to the project, project page.
Okay, thank you. So if I talk to the audience, you understand to email to the project page?
The project page. Where would I find that?
Staff, where's it hidden? The project page.
The project page is on our Connect site.
Sorry.
On our Connect site.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, sorry. So again, we go back to questions. I think Counsel McClintock?
Yes, thank you. On page three, you talk about the splash pad consideration. And I know that the majority of counsel directed staff to come back with, with the possibility of including a splash pad. But I recall a consultant on the day that she was speaking with us as well, she said something about this was not a good location for a splash pad. Do you recall that? Or could you, could you maybe expand upon that, if that's your recollection as well?
Thank you for the question through the chair. I don't, I don't recall that specific response from the consultant.
That is my, that is my recollection. I was wondering, I don't know how to contact the, the person, but I was just wondering why, if she did say that, why she would say that. Would there be a possibility of a follow-up through you?
Through to the chair, I can't speak as to what, what you're, what you thought you heard. I can offer that setting of a splash pad is an important decision.
But all I'm asking is for the consultant to be contacted and see if those were her words. And if those were her words, what was her reasoning for that? I just like to know the reasoning for it not being there. If you think it's a good idea, fine, but I, I seem to recall something different.
Thanks for the question. Sorry, Counselor, through the chair, I'll try again to respond. The, the meeting's, the meeting's recorded, so we can understand exactly what the consultant has said. And we can also ask the consultant. I think, I think if she did offer any advice, it was similar to what was captured in page three of the report, that there are some other considerations that are worth discussing.
Thank you.
Counsel Stock?
Yes. Thank you, Chair, through you to staff. I really appreciated the report that we received and also the consultants at the last council meeting where we discussed this. And I thought that that report at that, at the prior council meeting was very good. I also think this report with the update and the consideration of a splash pad is, gives us a lot of great information. I, I think maybe the consultant may have had the same idea that the gentleman who was here, who said that the demographic in the area that, you know, of Deep Cove and everywhere all around is more in my age group, these sort of, sort of, kind of, well, I mean, I might, I suppose I could use a splash pad, but there's not many young children in our area, in Ardmore or Deep Cove or, and so it could have, I have no idea, but I, it could have been that she was thinking of that, the same as the gentleman who raised the point at the beginning of the meeting. I had no idea that splash pads were so expensive. It's a lot of money for, for a splash pad. And as I raised at the last meeting, I'm not for taking apart the pickleball courts. Everybody knows how I feel about it and think about it. I think we should keep what we built. And it wasn't only $120,000, it was closer to $179,000. I'd like to get a check on that from our files, what exactly the number was. But I remember thinking at the time when Counselor McClintock and I were on council, that it was a lot of money for the pickleball courts. So I think we need to keep that area. I, you know, I, I don't know how we, I like the ideas in here for reconfiguring, if you want to use that verb, the, the pickleball courts. So, you know, I think that this report has options on page 32 of 85, that we receive it, and that we, pardon me, modify the revised list of emerging ideas and provide, or, or we could provide alternate direction to staff. And we could confirm that a splash pad is to be included. But then this goes to the budget question again, that counselors were asking about during the RCMP discussion. So, you know, I, I'm, I don't know what to do about that, except receive the report with thanks from our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Marshall?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things on that. So thank you, staff, for the report. I really appreciate it. I think having the two options, A and B, was quite helpful to see the difference between the two. The splash pad, I know that we talked to the last meeting about adding that, and I appreciate the additional information that staff have shared. So it is costly. I do agree that, you know, we've talked about this particular park not being a destination park. It is more of a neighborhood park. So having traffic coming in there from all different areas, a little bit concerned about that. We voiced those concerns before. There are young people in Deep Cove, believe it or not, but there's other areas that, contrary to what everybody's saying, there are young people that live in Deep Cove. But I don't know if there's enough to make, to make that, that a viable option when we're looking at that amount of money. And I agree, we're talking about budget process coming up. So myself, although I think it was good to explore it to the degree that we did, I don't support that option now, knowing we're talking about climate change, the concern with water, the staff, or the traffic that it's going to bring, and then the amount of money, too, because it is quite expensive. And we are trying to make sure we're fiscally responsible. So I wouldn't support that. Receiving the report is fine, except that I really feel we do need that piece of community engagement. And I've heard from a number of community members now, today in particular, that weren't able to attend the engagement because it was canceled. So they just had questions as to why it was canceled and when we're going to rebook that. So maybe I'll start through you, Chair to staff, if, if staff can just answer, if you have an idea of when that engagement is going to happen. And then I have a suggestion for a motion to, to put forward on that matter.
Thank you. And through the chair, staff are ready to respond with rescheduling the round two community engagement as soon as upon direction from tonight's meeting. So it was really just some clarity we were seeking. We were initially looking at right before Christmas, but we'd have to revisit that. But we are, the exact same rollout that was proposed will commence again, and we just have to come back, the exact dates.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, I, the concern I have with some of this is just that I think we are doing our due diligence, but it is taking a long time. And I know people are expressing their concerns that it's sitting there, what are we doing with this asset for the community? So I would like to see that done sooner than later. I know it's not a lot of time. So my suggestion is if we were to put a survey forward onto the website, make people aware of the survey, can we have that done, a simple survey? So you've got the emerging ideas now, you've got option A and B. Can we have that done by the end of November, so that we can have that back to us for December 1st council meeting to discuss the results of the survey and, and make a decision?
Through the chair, considering it's November 17th today, I don't think that we can achieve that. But of course, we, I could come back to counsel with confirmation.
Counsel DeBattista? And then Counsel McConkey?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just question three to staff. When I hear the term emerging concepts and emerging ideas, you know, when I was the one who brought forward the pickleball, or the pickleball, ooh, sorry, hang on, delete, correct? The splash pad idea that came forward, the whole intention, my understanding, was that we come forward with ideas that are brought forward so that we can engage with the public about those. So I love the fact that the staff have gone out and gotten some, you know, what Esquimalts learned, what Central Sanits' learned. I think that's important to know. But I think the idea, my intentionality, isn't to say we're building a splash pad. It's to say to the public, this is a potential option. What do you think about it? Right? And so, you know, I, I completely agree. It's a lot of money. Maybe it's not the right location, but I want to hear it from the public, from the open house. Right? And that was my intentionality of bringing it forward, not to say that here's the new plan and council's approved it, we're moving ahead with a splash pad. It's that the public at an open house gets to provide that feedback, because I agree. I know, I mean, the elementary school is a couple hundred yards away, so to suggest that there are no young kids in So to suggest that there are no young kids in the Deep Cove Lands End area, sorry, doesn't fly with me. I could probably list 20 names right now that live within walking distance of Wayne Road Park. That said, my understanding of this is that this is supposed to go to an open house to then get public feedback on these emerging ideas. Am I mistaken in that? And that's three to staff. Is that not what we were expecting this to go? Or were these emerging ideas concrete for the open house?
Staff, any comment?
Thank you, councillor. And through the chair. The clarity that we're seeking is perhaps, I guess, actually, let me rephrase. The engagement material that were mostly captured in the images that were provided were also supplemented with a survey that took some time, that talked about various aspects. There was a lot of discussion following last council's direction as to what kind of questions are we going to ask about the splash pad? Was there a certain location desire for the splash pad? Is... Are we asking the public, are they interested in a splash pad in general? Or is this a council-supported idea at Wayne? Because as we went through that, those discussions with the consultant team, they just cautioned that if it was a council-offered addition, it might be perceived as that this is supported. And so be careful with what you're asking for. Is council prepared to proceed with a splash pad here? And I'm like, that's a great question. Let's think about this a little bit more. And that's what page three of this report is trying to do, is just taking a pause just so staff can make sure we fully understand council's direction and make sure that we're not providing an option that we may or may not necessarily want to proceed with at this time. So again, it was perhaps some questions that I could have asked at the last meeting. There wasn't an opportunity there.
Thank you. So councillor McConkey, then, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. And through the chair to staff, thanks very much, Mr. Martin, for your report. And it was very helpful to see the layouts as far as A and B. And I think, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, my recollection of the last meeting was to ask staff to come back with some financial figures, which you've done in your report. And then I think it's incumbent upon us, when I look at the staff report, to confirm whether we want to put a splash pad in or not in as far as the emerging concepts, or at least this is how I've interpreted it. As far as the splash pad, I'm sure it'd be a lovely addition. However, I think the cost is prohibitive. We're all very concerned about that. In regards to the Esquimalt one, that was built in 2017. And it is a fabulous place. Kids love it. Built at 1.8 million, I can't imagine at today's times what that would cost. But as far as the conversation regarding location, there was a huge difference there. That splash pad was installed right next to the rec center in the downtown core of Esquimalt, next to the Bull and Park ballfields, next Memorial Park, by the library, by Municipal Hall, tons of parking on a bus route. So a really great opportunity for residents in Esquimalt. I don't personally see that opportunity out in Wayne Park. I think it could be a wonderful addition at some point in time when the dollars are available. But that probably wouldn't be the top of my list as far as a place to put it in. But that's just one voice on council. So for me, I'm really not prepared to support going forward with this because that was how I interpreted it to come back. We were supposed to be looking at it, decide yea or nay. So I think for me, I would have to say no to the splash pad. And then I personally really like option B that's been presented in the report. So that's just kind of my takeaway from, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, talk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Through you to staff. I was just wondering, on page 51, it says preliminary ideas, option B, but my... What happened to the, you know, the, sorry, asphalt courts? I mean, I know they're not... Nobody else wants them to be pickleball courts, except maybe me and councillor McClintock. But that doesn't mean that diagram there that we're taking them apart, does it? I just realized that when I looked at option B. I see that there's a, it says original pickleball court imprint or no, footprint. But it almost looks as if they're not there anymore or something. Through... Thank you, Chair, through you to staff.
Thanks, councillor. Through the chair, are you referring to the option B image?
Yes.
With the community gathering?
Page 51.
Sorry, yeah, community gathering space over top of the extent of the pickleball court?
Yeah.
So the idea, the idea there was discussed and also provided by a resident group that we engaged with and the interest holders. So there would be a partial repurpose, perhaps an entire repurpose. It is a large area where there'd be a... This shows a covered area with seating areas. But we could also have a couple shade umbrellas adjacent that. That would be refined. But it would basically, some of the subgrade and surfacing would be reused.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Councillor, further questions? Councillor Marshall?
Yeah, through you, Chair to staff. I'm just trying to figure out how to sort of proceed with this. But for me, it's really around that community engagement piece. So can we be provided with some dates that you think you would be able to have community engagement completed and then a report back to council?
Thanks for the question, through the chair, of course. First thing tomorrow, I'll be kickstarting the project and trying to realign as close as possible to the previous dates. And then once that's established and availability and whatnot, I'd be communicating it out through RCAO. If not before a public meeting.
Okay, so can you tell me what the original dates were?
Through the chair, the open house that was postponed, November 13th?
You were commenting saying you're going to go back to the original plan. So can you just give me an idea of when that is? I mean, we can provide you with dates, but I want to make sure that I'm hearing your input first. So you commented and said, go back to the original plan. I'm just wondering what that looked like.
Thanks for the question, through the chair. I was referring to the original timeline that was shared that resulted in a finalized park plan sometime in the spring, early in the spring.
Through you, Chair to staff, when is our first council meeting in January?
Through the chair, thank you. Our first meeting is January 12th.
Any further questions?
And I guess just a statement. Thank you, staff. So I would like to see the community engagement move forward. And I would like to see council put some deadlines and some timelines on that. So I guess I could try to attempt to make a motion and see how that goes. And then council obviously discuss it, let me know if there's anything that I missed. So I would say that we receive staff report IS 25028 titled Wayne and Noble Garden Park. Or I'm actually going to separate the two. I think I'll talk about Wayne first. So Wayne Park Plans Emerging Directions and Revisited for Information. And then direct staff to present the revised list of engagement ideas during the second phase of public engagement, to have a report back to council on January 12th, 2026, at the first meeting of 2026. And then the splash pad, I think I'll do as a separate, something you could use as a separate motion. So I'm just going to put that one motion on the floor for now. And I suppose I did say it's separate, but it would make sense to have Noble Garden included in that for community engagement.
Okay, I'll second that. Now we're open for discussion, questions? Councillor McConkey?
Through the chair to staff, probably our CAO. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I believe there was an email sent out to Mayor and council indicating two potential dates for a proposed open house. And I think something like December 15th and 17th stands out in my mind. Can you confirm that? Thank you.
Through the chair, I believe there were two proposed dates provided. I'm not sure if those were discussed with the consultants or not. I think they were mid-December, so that's likely what we would be aiming for. And then a survey during December to aim to come back to January, January 12th. Okay, thank you.
Councillor, further questions? Councillor McClintock?
Yes, thank you. I know there are members on council that'd like to expedite this as quickly as possible. And I'm certainly, I have a number of people wanting to know when this open house is going to be. However, traditionally, is December, the mid-December or the 20th of December a good time? Or 19th of December a good time for that being that close to Christmas? And do you think we'll really get the engagement of the community within a week or two of Christmas?
Thank you, councillor. Through the chair. Our approach to engage in the community in phase two isn't limited to the open house. There was envisioned in the comms plan, a direct mail out with itemized hard copy survey, another survey online, the webpage information. So we anticipate there'd be other input gathered, not just from the open house. And I think that you could argue that it's not an ideal time for an open house. Perhaps also, many people are home around Christmas and neighbors walking up to the fire hall might be well attended, but there is that concern. There's always that risk.
Thank you. Councillor Marshall? No? Any further questions? Councillor Sanjeev?
Thank you, Chair. Just one of the things, we're talking about open house as well as a survey. I see that it would be easier for us to engage into a relatively simple survey to get an input of what an open house would look like, where there is the option of getting in an open house things that had not been addressed here. But at the same time, in order to get information and feedback in advance, I don't see any reason why the 13 points that have been mentioned in option A or in option B are put on the website as soon as possible and comments of yes or no as an option be given to see how people react to that. Following that, whenever the discussion happens in an open house, it is easier to go in to say, this is what so far the community is saying. What is the additional information that we get? At least it then lays out a process where people are within a framework to answer questions with or to look towards, rather than leaving it blanketed, open option, which all that happens is you will have 200 different ideas. We'll then go through another category of deciphering what's right, what's not right. Comes back to the council on January 12th for again, another round of discussion that this were the emerging ideas. And then the council makes a decision. There has been enough consultation or not enough consultation, depends how people look at it. There has been options given through different reports that staff has brought forward. I do feel that it is time that the council takes steps to address the issues that are at hand, rather than delaying the process over and over again. I know a fellow councillor thinks that we are trying to push things. The reality is that it has been on this bed for a very long time. It's now to resurrect and get a solution. There have been councils after councils that go without making decisions, and we are cleaning up most of the things that have been left in place. So in my opinion, there's a simple survey questions that could be laid out with all the 14 points or however number of points you want to look at of different items here. It could go onto the website on connect not signage. Tomorrow, you have everything itemized with a simple yes, no, and get people to give input. At the same time, you could add information about their proximity to the Wayne Park. Hopefully that's captured either through their postal code or something that gives enough input into that. To the motion that has been made, I would think adding the survey goes in by the end of the week would be the easy thing to look at. So that's where I...
Councillor Marshall?
Yeah, thank you for that, councillor Sanjeev. I think that's actually a really good idea. I appreciate that. It also brought up for me when you mentioned that, thinking about the open house that we did at the fire hall for the Tatlow Road, which was really well done because it had the concepts displayed. You had a red dot or a green dot, yes or no, basically. It was very simple and it was very well attended. And it was, it did have those boundary frameworks so that we could actually get some information from them that we can make a decision with. So I do like that idea. I can amend my motion. I don't think it's moved, so I'll just add that to the list for engagement is to have that survey up online by the end of the week. Simple survey, yes or no for those emerging ideas. And then having that similar thing to the open house. So having those concepts available. Do you support this or not support it at the open house? That's, I can add that.
Okay, I would certainly accept that. Councillor McClintock?
I would, through you to councillor Marshall, I would support that, providing there was also a category in there for neither. This isn't the end game, this option A or option B. There has to be an opportunity for people that don't agree with either one. So I would, if that was included, I would certainly support your motion.
Yeah, thank you. I don't agree with that, so I'm not going to include that in my motion. I don't think that's going to make an accurate survey to say neither, and somebody just says neither. There is other options for people to provide feedback. They can come to the open house, they can come to public participation like they've done. They can also email. We have also gone to other groups to get feedback. Staff have done that. So I don't support that. I don't think that's a good way to do the survey. I don't think it'll give us data that we need. I don't think that's helpful.
Staff?
Through the chair, thank you for counsel for your motion. In the accepted submission from the consultant team, which is a professional park landscape architect that has developed many parks successfully, there was a work plan provided, the council approved, and we're following that work plan. We've built up that work plan and we're about to execute it. And then we had some different information, which resulted in a pause. What I'm hearing from council as a possible motion would further refine that approach. And that would take more time and possibly a scope change with our consultant team to understand exactly how to execute that. Some of the issues with our online survey are that it is difficult to understand the registrant for our online survey. So we had spent quite a bit of time understanding and considering a combination of different survey techniques for this park project. I'd like to come back to council with some more detail about the comms and the proposal with some revised dates, assuming that I get some, receive some direction with regards to the splash pad. And I'm still confident that we can get through to a completion in a timely manner. So just some advice, food for thought.
Yeah, thank you for that, staff. So the December 15th and 17th dates that were proposed for the open house, the motion that I'm going to put forward is to stick with that. So can you just explain to me what is confusing those dates?
Thank you, councillor. I was referring to the discussion about a survey before the end of this week. So that was, that created some concern for me. I won't be able to commit to any dates tonight because the communication and the engagement, the team consists of the consultant as well. So I'd have to ensure that there's some availability there.
Okay, so the email that we received saying the 15th and 17th didn't include if the consult was built. We just haven't done that work yet, correct?
Thank you for the follow-up question. Following the meeting, the previous meeting, there was quite a bit of effort trying to rejig some of our existing material to meet a December open house. I was securing that and I shared that with our CAO. That level of detail was then transferred, shared with Mayor and council. That was not, we did not really fully understand how to approach this new information. So that was shared preemptively. Since then, since this report... that was, that was shared preemptively. Since then, since this report, we said, okay, let's, let's pause, let's get the further direction, and then we can, let's, let's gear up again. So I apologize that that information was passed on to you at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McConkey?
Thank you. And through the chair to staff. If we were to bring forward a motion tonight to not go forward with the splash pad, does that do anything to assist you in being able to move up the dates there? When we look at options A and B here, I don't see the splash pad in there. So I'm just trying to figure out here if there's an option, if it was the will of council, not to move forward with the splash pad. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And through the chair, yes, that, that would provide, that would most closely match where we thought we were going. So that would be the best opportunity to meet those dates. Yes.
Thank you. Christine?
I thank you, staff. So I think, I'm not sure if it's moved and seconded, but there's, there's a motion that we're discussing if it has been moved and seconded. So my suggestion would be, I, I'm willing, I don't know how we want to work this, if you want me to do it after the vote, but I'm willing to also put a motion forward that we not consider the splash pad at Wayne Park.
Okay, I'm certainly second that. I was just about to come to you.
Thank you through the chair. So that motion, your original motion was seconded, so it is on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I'll do that after, after we finish debate on that. Yep. Okay, I'll hold my thoughts for now.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, Counsel Dipitista first, then Counsel McConkey second.
Thank you, Chair. So essentially, the motion that's on the floor right now is just point one. Is that where we've ended up? Or was it all the other survey stuff as well? Because I feel like we've spun back. So if it's just number one of the recommendation of staff, great, but it seems like we've gone down a bit of a hole. Are we going to come back out of that and talk about splash pad after? Or I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm about to vote on.
Yeah, so the motion was to receive the report and direct staff to do an open house on December 15th through 17th, bring that report back to us on January 12th, have a survey done by the end of the week to have it completed by the open house, and then all of that brought back to us on January 12th.
Okay, I guess my comment is I, I won't be, I won't be able to support that. That sounds like a lot. And without knowing whether our consultant can meet that timeline, you know, I just feel like we're going to set ourselves up for, if the consultant says they can't do it, they can't do it. And now what have we done? We've kind of put ourselves in an awkward situation. So I won't support it as, as presented, but.
Yep, before, Counsel McConkey, staff?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I just might just make a comment that I think the January 12th deadline, that's doable, I think. And then our staff could work to ensure that we have consultant availability and venue availability for an open house in December. I believe that there's been some work done already on a survey. So that, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate that that would be an issue to launch the survey, keep it open for a reasonable amount of time, and report back by January 12th. So if there's concern around the actual dates, I think that if, if, if the desire from, from councils to have this back with some results in hand by January 12th, I definitely think that that's doable, and we can provide an update to council on December 15th, possibly at the council meeting, or even by email on, and to confirm some of these dates in December. I just thought I would offer that to council.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing from staff is that my motion is doable. Is that correct?
Through the chair, I, I would just say there are specific dates for the open houses, and I'm not, I, I thought that those were confirmed with the consultant, but if there's no consultant availability, that would be my only concern, that we would just want to confirm that. I think I had December 11th and 17th in the meeting, but, but we would be able to confirm that, and it would be within the middle of December.
Yeah, so somewhere in there. So in other words, having a report back at January 12th, that would include surveys that are, that'll go out by the end of the week to start and have our open houses. We can have that back for January 12th. Sorry, I just see staff there.
Through the chair, I'm hearing issue a survey before the end of the week. Is that correct? So I don't, I'm unable to commit to that at this, at this point.
Okay, so can we do this, can you do the survey alongside the open house? Like, when could we get, because I, I know that our C A O said that it's already sort of started. So when would we be able to get that survey up?
As I've, as I've shared previously, and through the chair, once, once I receive direction, as per, with reference to the staff report, I'm fully, I'll be fully engaged to reengage the consultant and come back with dates for council. I'm unable to speak for them at this time. I apologize.
Okay, so my motion as stands, then we, it says that, trying to remember what it says. I'm going to try to remember the wording. So we're asking to do a survey by the end of the week, and then having the open house. And I've put the dates in there as December 15th and 17th. And now I'm hearing it may not be exactly those dates. So I can, if the seconders amenable, then I can make an amendment to the motion to have the, a report back to council by January 12th with the results of a survey and open house that occurs in December, to have all of that compiled and back to council for January 12th.
And I agree with that change, with that amendment. Okay. Counsel, Counsel Stock?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Well, I just think that, you know, we're heading into Christmas, and Counsel McClintock had mentioned this a lot earlier in our discussion. And basically, everybody downs tools around, you know, December the 10th or so, something like that. People go slower. There's parties, there's dinners, there's Christmas celebrations of all kinds. So my view is we will, we're asking staff to perform an impossible task, not the report to us back on January 12th. But I don't see how you can get a survey out by the end of this week. It's already Monday night. And then have people give an input by, when did you say, beginning of December or middle of December? I just, I just think we have to be reasonable, and I don't think that's reasonable deadlines. I think it's way too fast. And by December, people aren't thinking about responding to surveys, even if Wayne Park is very important to them. They're thinking about Christmas holidays, going to Cancun, or whatever people, wherever they go at Christmas. But they're not thinking about trying to fill in some survey for us, or going to an engagement meeting. I mean, a few people might, but I don't think you'll get the engagement that you're looking for, the number of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counsel Stock. The motion is a little bit different. Like I said, I amended it so that the survey and the engagement happens in December and the report back by January 12th. So it doesn't say end of the week now. And I would disagree with the timing. I think on this issue, we've heard from many members of the community. There are people really engaged in this, in the Deep Cove area and others. And I know they're going to come out and talk at community engagement and complete the surveys. I've talked to many of them today, really quite upset that they haven't had the opportunity yet. And if it happens in December, they're very happy to participate. So I think it's a reasonable timeframe. I agree with Counsel Sanjeev that we need to make a decision on this, and we need to do that once we get that community engagement. We need to have that done.
Thank you. Other comments? No? Counsel McConkey?
I was just going to call the question. That was all.
Okay, so we got a question called. Okay, so we, question of staff first. Do the amended motion first? How can we do them both at the same time?
Thank you through the chair. You could just vote on the motion. We just put it in as a friendly amendment.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Repeat, please.
There's no need to amend or to vote on the main motion. We just amended the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Just want to make sure. So we have a motion on the floor which is seconded. So now, does everyone know what we're voting on?
Question.
There's been, it's been called. Sorry. So those in favor of the motion, amended motion? Those opposed? Motion carries four, three. Counsel Dipitista, Counsel Stock, and Counsel McClintock in opposition. Counsel McConkey?
Thank you, Chair. And then I'd like to make the motion that we've done that as far as number two on Ben, or Mr. Martin's staff report in regards to the splash pad. And I would like to make the motion that a splash pad not be included in the list of emergence ideas for Wayne Park. Thank you.
I will second that. It's on the floor. Any questions, comments? Counsel Dipitista?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this, this started with me, and I still think it's something I like to hear from the public about, right? I, I share the concern about the money and some of the infrastructure requirements. But if this is something our public tells us they want to proceed with, that's, that's up to them, right? If they make it a big enough issue, that's, that's to them. So I still think it should at least be presented in the survey and in the open house. So I, I won't vote in favor of the motion because I think if the public wanted it, and they brought it up repeatedly, we should at least ask them. So I won't be in favor of it.
Any further questions? So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, and there's no other questions. Those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? Motion carries four, three. Counsel Dipitista, Counsel Stock, and Counsel McClintock in opposition.
Through the chair, we still have, the earlier motion was specific to Wayne Park. We still need to do a motion for the Noble Garden.
Oh, I appreciate that, that split. Are there any other motions on Wayne Park?
So I originally said just to Wayne Park, but then I think when I was saying the motion, I said it, it makes sense to add Noble in there as well. So I think I did add it in there.
Okay. Yeah, I was voting for both.
Thank you. Thank you. My mistake.
I missed it as well. That's okay. Again, have any more motions or any further comments on Wayne Park? Okay, if there are not, then we move on to Noble Park. Again.
Always included in the motion?
I thought there'd be more opportunity for discussion. Okay, no problem. Perhaps I should ask staff, are there any other motions you would like before we move off Wayne Park and Noble? No? Okay.
Through the chair, I just wanted to let Emily who's in the audience to be able to connect with the staff with regards to your fancy issue and the property line.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take these out. Not used to using these damn things. So now I assume that we've done with item A, eight, A, two. So we move on to item B, which is council liaison reports. And the first one up is Counsel Dipitista. Did you have anything to add?
Nope, Chair, nothing to add. I intended as the alternate fairly fulsome discussion that went on for hours. But that's, everything's, everything pertinent's in the report.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counsel Stock, questions, comments? There'd be none. Those in favor? Unanimous. Then we move quickly on to item C, which is committee of the whole report. And there might be a question on this. Any comment on the committee of the whole report? No, not this. Counsel Stock, you were the chair of that particular meeting. Have you anything to add?
Yes, some, I think some counselors had a question as to, should this go, should this be here? But I, anyway, these are the draft minutes of the special meeting committee of the whole held November 3rd, 2025. And it's 2025 dash 11 dash 03 special cow minutes. And the recommendation is that council receive the draft minutes of the special, sorry, special meeting of the committee of the whole held November 3rd, 2025 for information.
Okay. Do I have a second? Counsel Stock? Sorry, Counsel Stock. Counsel Sanjeev. Sanjeev, an S.
It's two S's. It's okay.
Okay, any comments, questions? Those in favor? Unanimous. I'm not aware of any motions on new business, but I'll put it on the floor. Are there any motions, new business? I see none. Sorry?
You won.
No, I don't want. Move item 10, which is correspondence. And we have an email dated November 7th from S. Robinson with regard to donation request from Deep Cove Elementary. Shall I put it on the floor? Counsel, any comments? And we do have a suggestion that we direct staff accordingly. So questions, comments? Counsel Dipitista?
Thank you, Chair. Just three to staff. Have we donated to the Pac Winter Fair before?
Through the chair, did check. We received something similar last year in 2024. And I believe we just received the correspondence for information. Through the chair, but we did promote it on social media.
Sorry?
Our social media. With a cute photo.
We posted it to social media? Okay.
We did promote it, so, you know, that helps.
Counsel McConkey?
Thank you, Chair. Based on that, I'll make the motion that we received the email dated November 7th, 2025 from S. Robinson, the subject line, donation request for Deep Cove Elementary. And further, direct staff to post on our social media channels.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel Sanjeev seconded. Any further comments, questions? See none. Those in favor? Unanimous. We move on to item 11, which is correspondence for council information. I look for consent resolution from, for A. Nope, I gotta take some of these out.
A, B, C.
A.
A, B, C.
Yeah, it's called, I'll rename them A, B, C. Related them.
Yep, I move to expect, to accept the correspondence under 11A, B, and C.
Thank you. Second, Counsel Sanjeev. Any questions, comments? See none. Those in favor? Unanimous. Rise and Report. This is for me, and there's only one item. At a special in-camera meeting held October 27, 2025, council passed the following resolution, and it's resolution number 80 dash IC, that council approve the early budget request to fund one F T E to resume the, to resume the role of human resources manager in corporate services department as outlined in staff report number C S 25031. So I look for a motion to adjourn. Counsel Dipitista, second, Counsel McConkey. Those in favor? Unanimous. And we're done for the evening, or for the day. Thank you, folks.